Decision-making and communication are really extraordinary. And so, you know, it's a special award for us. And every year, you know, it's either a handful of students. And this year, there was really one who like the cream that rises to the top. I mean, when we had the discussion, there was one name that popped up and it was unanimous, and it was Ian. So, you know, we're proud to recognize him and we're sorry to see him go. But we have great hopes that he's going to move on, you know, through transitioning into his, you know, college career and continue to do great things.
Excellent.
So, Brian, I'd like to see if Ian's there. I think he can talk anyway, even if we can't see him.
Yeah.
You good? Okay.
Yeah.
We're sorry I can't see you.
Congratulations, Ian.
Thank you.
So, I guess what I'll do now is I'll ask you read the little certificate. Not little, I'll read the certificate. It's the Community Leadership Award. The Village of Irvington and the Irvington About Safe Kids Community Advisory Board recognize Irvington High School Junior Ian Schwang. Is he a junior or is he a senior?
He's a junior.
Okay. You said he's leaving us, but that's not till...
Right, he's not leaving us.
I'm confused for a second.
Sorry.
Another year.
Too much, too much time alone.
For dedication and commitment to promoting healthy and responsible choices by teens in the Irvington community on this first day of June 2020. Signed by myself as Mayor Allison Felix and Tanya Hunt are the co-chairs of I Ask C A B. So, congratulations, Ian. Thank you for all your hard work. And thankfully, we have one more year of your dedication for the community. One more easy one where you won't be away from us anyway.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ian. I look forward to putting a face to the name.
Right, congratulations, Ian. You're gonna have to wear a name tag, so when we see you in town, we'll know who you are.
Yeah.
If you want to Google him, you can see him in his wrestling attire because he's a champion wrestler, so.
Congratulations, stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustees, for facilitating this tonight. We appreciate it.
We do. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Great.
Bye. Thank you.
Next up, we have a couple more guests. We have a Larry's Word Brief overview of proposed school budget by Chief Lieutenant Dr. Christopher Harrison. It's been our tradition, I don't know, for the last, well, I guess since at least Chris Harrison's been here, is that five years now, I think?
Yeah, hold on, let me introduce him into the meeting.
All right.
Okay.
There he is.
And before we get started, I want to just double-check that Carol is going to be coming on.
Nice to meet you, Chris.
Good evening, everyone.
How are you?
Good, good. So, I like how Larry did preface it by saying brief. And I will take the cue. And Brian, I'll add that this is my eighth year as superintendent. So, this is the eighth year we've done this. And despite our social distancing requirements, to me, it was important to continue this tradition going.
Absolutely. It had to be more than five years, because now when I see someone spelled Chris with a C, I think it's weird, so.
Chris, do you want Carol on the panel?
Yeah.
Okay. And I think I see here, there's a Carol in the audience, so I'm gonna assume that's her.
Yeah, she's there.
I hope so. If not, then we have a different Carol joining. All right. Good.
Welcome, Carol.
And let me know if you have any trouble sharing your screen. Oh, wait, only hosts, hold on a second, all panelists can share.
It's given me the...
Yes.
...to do so, so.
Yep, okay. Good.
Great. The floor, such as it is, is yours, Chris.
All right, thank you. Just bear with me a second.
Uh-oh, oh, here we go.
Yeah, looks like it's working, I hope.
Yes.
So, all right, well, good evening. And I, Carol and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak to the trustees. And then I want to thank Larry, the mayor, and the board for hosting us once again for the eighth consecutive year. That said, each year, we always kind of begin by talking about our vision for a school district and think about those principles on which we ground all of our efforts. And in doing so, we think about the different components of that school experience and what we need to do each and every year to ensure that we continue to support students' needs today and prepare them for tomorrow. So, that focuses on academics, it focuses on social-emotional well-being, and it brings into the whole fold when we think about our facilities and how they contribute to learning, the community's investment in school facilities, and the role that our staff plays by supporting them, making sure that they receive the training and support that they need, but are also paid in a fair and responsible manner by the school district. A lot of conversation that we've had over the past few months now has really begun to focus on the fiscal health of the school district. And this is a slide that we've utilized for the past few years, and I'm glad that we do, because of our efforts on this front, we're being in a much better, healthier position with all the fiscal challenges that are before us than many other school districts in our region. Everything that we do in the school district is grounded in the work of our strategic plan, which was developed going back a number of years ago with a stakeholder group. And there, we identified six strategic objectives that we align all of our work, all of our decision-making with. And through our budget process, every single consideration that we put before the board was connected with one of these critical points. That said, our budget process has been quite different than what we've been accustomed to in anyone that's followed. School district budgets and trustee elections. Typically, on May 19th, which, you know, we look at always a Tuesday in May, we would have the traditional election. But because of the state of emergency that we were in associated with the pandemic, our process was put on hold. And rather than the board adopting the budget in mid-April, they adopted the budget in mid-May, once guidance was received from the state. And now, we're in the midst of the first-ever vote-by-mail or absentee ballot election in New York school history. All of our voters must vote by mail. Ballots should be hitting mailboxes. I've heard them as soon as Saturday, and many, many people, I heard, received them today. All of the ballots must be returned to the school district by Tuesday, the 9th, at 5:00 PM. So, let's think about them being returned, because we have to have them received by the school district by that time on the 9th. So, if you are mailing your ballot, you should certainly get it in the mail a few days sooner than that to ensure that it is received by the district. Any ballots that are received after 5:00 PM on the 9th will not be able to be counted. Additionally, on Monday, the 8th, and Tuesday, the 9th, we will have the opportunity for folks in the community to drop their completed ballots in a locked, secure mailbox that has been affixed to the side of Dow's Lane, right by the district office entrance. So, head over by the gymnasium, by the flagpole on Monday and Tuesday of next week, and you'll be able to drop off your ballots between the hours of 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. When we think of the school district budget, you can really break it down very simplistically into two different categories. The first being business and operations, which you can see has a number of funds associated with it and numerous expenditures that focus on the operational side, what it takes to keep the school district going. But really, as a community, what most of us see is the curriculum instruction side. And that's everything that's really public-facing and that benefits our students. So, when we think of this budget and all those different components moving forward, we think about that variance that naturally occurs from year to year. And that's, you know, increases in contractual salaries, we think about costs for related services, students with disabilities, added district placements, and many other expenditures that are built into the budget. So, when we just look at the variance for this year, going from one year to the next, you can see a total of just over $1.4 million. That said, when we look at our proposed budget, the one that the community is currently voting upon, it is a total budget of $64.5 million, which represents a 2.5% increase from the current school year, the 1920 fiscal year for the district. I do want to state that while it does say 2.5, I want to be clear that this is a tax-cap-compliant budget. When we look at where we are from a fiscal standpoint, when we think about that push-ahead-cover number that I referenced on the prior slide, that amounts for 2.3 of that 2.5%. It also took into account $370,000 worth of reductions that we're able to make along the way. And it is a very modest list of new additions or considerations and things that are all absolutely essential at this point in time. The addition of a social worker, we've been operating with one social worker for a number of years in the school district. And when we look at all the challenges that we are facing in our nation today, ranging from COVID-19 to the political and cultural challenges that are headline of the news, unfortunately, the past week, we need another social worker to be able to help support our children. We're also looking for COSER, which is a shared service through Bosse's, to bring in some additional security support in looking at our schools and making sure that our schools are as safe as they possibly can, helping us in our planning for re-entry this fall. And then finally, we're taking into account the anticipated reductions that we're going to see from the state. We know that there's going to be additional reductions in state aid, many of which are not going to be able to be offset by any type of federal stimulus that we may receive. So, when we look at the reductions that we're making, $370,000, we are already accounting for anticipated reductions in aid. That said, when we started our budget journey, we had a variety of considerations that were before us. And I referenced those on the top half of this slide, amounting to $184,000. However, before that, in our budget process, there are a number of items that we had before the board and that the board was supportive at that point in time. Unfortunately, the financial reality has set in, and we recognize that we're not able to move forward with them. But it's important to share them, because if you were to step back and take a look at this presentation afterwards, you would be able to see the direct linkage to all those strategic objectives that I had referenced earlier. So, when we think about where we are and the reductions that we've made, as I indicated, we made $370,000 worth of reductions anticipating receiving less state aid in the coming months. And you can see the different areas where we've scaled back. Some health insurance savings, which comes from a cooperative service that we're involved with here in the school district. And it is something that I'm proud to be the vice president of, and through the good work of that organization, we are able to cut costs to local school districts and other expenditures. A lot of these things are items that we are not just completely cutting. I'm proud to look at some of the facilities projects, such as the $39,000 you see right in the middle of the screen. Here, during the closure, we've taken advantage of the availability of our maintenance and custodial staff to tackle some painting projects that we wouldn't ordinarily be able to get to during the school year. So, when we think about where we are today, it's a budget that aligns with all those objectives that I referenced before. We're providing for increased social and emotional support for all of our students, making sure that our schools are safe. We're continuing to invest in those tried-and-true instructional programs, supporting instruction across the board. But we've built in a number of mechanisms to be able to weather the financial crisis that is around us here in the state of New York. We've outlined strategies to be able to withstand additional cuts, be $370,000 that I had referenced earlier. Here, if you go back to our presentation from May 5th, you will see different groupings of reductions that the administration has recommended to the Board of Education to contemplate. Some may be decisions that the board makes in the coming weeks or months. Others will be expenditures that we will put on hold until we see how the revenue picture really materializes during the course of the school year. And of course, we will keep the community apprised of all the developments associated with that. So, when we think of our budget, it breaks down into some larger-scale categories once again. And you can see the overview and the variances that I had referenced before. And then stepping back, and you can see actually the summary by category. And we like to point this out to see where those variances are and those shifts that may really make up. And then we take a look at the first two items here. It's always a reminder to think that in education, we're a people business. And when we think of our expenditures, you can see 73% of our budget is directly tied to our employees, as highlighted on this slide here. So, when we think of the tax levy cap that I had referenced before, the calculation as it plays out every year, I am always proud and believe that we need to be transparent in our work. And each and every year in this process, we want to outline it for the community to be able to demonstrate the work that we're doing and to communicate the compliance that we have with the cap. So, that said, taking a look at the revenue side of our budget, you can see the decrease in state aid that we've already realized, down nearly 11%, some decrease in tuition, where we're taking in fewer added district students at this point in time. And then the revenue. And when you look at this illustration, you step back and, you know, as a community and as a governing board of the community, that idea that 91% of the budget really comes from local taxes is something that you're well aware of. And right now, maybe one of those things that is a little bittersweet. When we think of the challenges that are going to hit us across the entire state and knowing that there's going to be significant funding reductions that are going to come forth throughout the course of the school year, we're relatively insulated in contrast to other communities where they have a greater reliance on state aid. So, here in Irvington, you look that our aid scenario is about 5.5%, which is certainly a much smaller portion of that pie. So, fortunately for us at this point in time, while any cuts in aid will have dramatic and drastic effects on the school district, we will have less significant impacts in contrast to many of our neighboring districts. Simple method of being able to calculate your tax cap or your local property taxes for your own property with some illustrations, simple calculator, and you can figure out an estimate of what your taxes will be for the next school year. And then looking at some of our trends over time and looking at the budget increases and the percentage increase from year to year. That said, it's always important for us to remind everyone of the importance of passing a budget to the operations of a school district and the experiences that we afford our children. What is normally the case does not seem to be possible in this day and age because of the modified budget timeline that we have. Typically, if a school district's budget was to be defeated, a Board of Education would have the opportunity to bring forth the same budget again for consideration by the voters of its community or to modify the proposal and allow them to vote on that modification. However, based upon the timeline set forth in the governor's executive orders, there is no adjustment or allocation for that second vote. And lawyers and professional organizations across the state have opined that it's quite unjust, as I think we'd all argue. But right now, if a budget was to fail on the 9th, we do not see that opportunity for a second vote. So, what that would result in is a contingent budget. And the contingent budget means that we would have to roll back our budget levels to this current year, which would mean we would see a decrease in our current budget with $524,000, which would equate to a $2.1 million cut in the school's budget. That would be devastating to the experiences that we enjoy here in Irvington for our children, the type of experiences, the quality education that they receive. So, if there are folks in our community that are advocates not only for our children and for the quality of our schools, but those that are interested in maintaining your tax values, you need to understand the connection between the school budget, the types of programs we provide, the success of our children, and the relation to the budget. If we had to resort to a contingency budget, we would not be able to buy any new equipment. The community, and I say this again, the community would not be able to use our facilities. So, I think of a wonderful partnership that we have with the Department of Recreation and the programs that we anticipate and hope that they will be able to run, such as all the youth basketball, the other sports that occur, that would not be able to occur. And we'd only be able to make capital improvements if it was an emergency. Any other cuts that we make would have to have dramatic reductions in student programs and staffing. One thing we always think about is that a staffing position equates to just over $100,000. So, if you think we had to reduce $2.1 million, you could think of the district having to lay off 21 people. And you can imagine the devastating impact on student programs and class sizes. On that said, the vote will culminate on the 9th. Our fine Mayor Mr. Smith is going to serve once again as our budget chairman and will be there on the 9th while all the votes are being tallied. Rather than that quick digital process where we get a printout and the election workers add up the numbers and the mayor announces the results of the election, this is going to be an arduous process where we have all the paper ballots that are going to be counted by a team of election workers. And at some point, the evening of the 9th or the wee hour, you know, hours of the 10th, we'll be able to make that announcement of the results of the budget. Just as a reminder that the ballot, if you haven't looked at it yet, there really are only a couple questions for the community to consider, the first being to vote yea or nay on the support of the budget, to elect three trustees, and you can also write in trustees. You can drop off the ballots, as I said, on the 8th and 9th at the district office, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And our website is loaded with resources. When you link, come to the main page on the right-hand side, there's an icon for budget, click on it, and it'll take you to dozens and dozens of budget-related documents for community to make informed decisions. And it'll also steer you towards our Facebook page, where I've recorded some videos on how to complete the absentee ballot and other important resources associated with it. And finally, I continue to give updates on a weekly basis for our school community and all that's going on, whether it's associated with the budget or more directly tied to district operations and our distance learning. I'd invite you to join me on Wednesday at noon on Facebook for my weekly Facebook Live broadcast, where I'll provide some more updates and information related to the goings-on of the district and the budget vote. So, thank you.
Great. So, just one quick review. You can mail in your ballots now, get them as soon as possible, once you, you know, kind of review the budget, figure out how you want to vote on that. You also vote for the school board trustees, which I believe it's three people running for three spots, is that correct?
That's right.
Uncontested, but still vote for them. Vote how you want on the budget and mail it in as soon as possible. Or if you don't do that, you can drop off your budget, or your vote in person at Dow's Lane, Monday and Tuesday, from 9:00 to 5:00, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. I got it. It must be simple.
Great.
Well, you know, as we say, you know, it's our pleasure to help you get the information out there. I hope people will review it, make an informed choice, and vote. You know, thanks again for, you know, I think you guys have gone out of your way the last eight years to, you know, get the information to people so they can make an informed choice. You know, I think that the availability of things online obviously has made it easier. This year, I think it's, you know, even more important for us to try to get the word out because it's not in the usual time. And, you know, people have to kind of work a little harder to maybe get that information. So, we appreciate you being here tonight, and thank you, Carol, for joining as well. And best of luck.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Carol.
Remember to vote this week.
Yeah. Vote soon.
Thank you.
Next up, Larry, we have an appointment of a police officer. I believe the ceremonial part has already happened without us, which is my favorite part of that. But we did have an opportunity as a board to interview Anthony, you know, and I think we were very impressed with not only his credentials, but his demeanor, his attitude, and his view of what, you know, the job in our region entails. So, I think there's, all we have to do tonight is just read the resolution.
Yes, it is.
All right. We resolve to appoint Anthony Capdora to the position of police officer grade two at an annual salary of $79,522 effective June 1st, 2020, subject to completion of probationary period of not less than 12 weeks and not more than 52 weeks. I'll make the motion if I can have a second.
I can.
All in favor?
All right.
Next up are announcements. My first announcement, we're just going to remind people again to vote, but I think that's probably not necessary since we just talked about that. There is also a vote for, there's a primary election coming up in June as well. June seems so far away, but it's actually June. So, if you have your absentee ballots, which you should have received for the, I think it's June 25th election, you can go ahead and, you know, you can make sure you have those, or if you don't, you can follow up now so that we don't miss it. I just wanted to make a brief statement for myself. I didn't unfortunately have a chance to talk to the boards to get kind of a board statement. But, you know, Irvington is proud to be a welcoming community to all. We're also very proud of our police officers, their professionalism, care of others in the community, and their fair treatment of everyone. However, on a national level, there seems to be an issue, as we have far too many horrible incidents and much too frequently. It may be training of police officers, it may be hiring, frankly, I don't know the answers. But I'm more than willing to discuss the village's role and my role as a human being with anyone who has ideas on how we can make things better. Tonight, I wish peace and love to everyone that is suffering, as well as those who feel helpless and in danger on a regular basis. So, I think that, you know, I think the pandemic was something that we all felt we were dealing with together. But I feel now, there's so many disenfranchised people out there that I just felt I had to say something tonight. You know, we have to come together as a country, and frankly, there's times like tonight where you feel that it's almost hopeless, but somehow we do get through. And maybe this time, we can have, you know, meaningful conversations about looking at the systemic problems that we can prevent these things from happening. So, I hope that's the case. And, you know, I know that everyone on this board would be willing to do whatever they could to make things better. So, I think that's, it goes without saying. Anybody else have any other announcements before we move on? Okay. So, we'll go to correspondence. We have two pieces of correspondence. The first is from the town of Greenberg. Actually, it's from Councilman Kenneth F. Jones. It's regarding the recognition of Irvington's enslaved residents. Dear Mr. Schoppler, I was present for the recognizing enslaved Africans in Irvington Committee's presentation by Irvington residents Kathy Sears and Sarah Cox on February 23rd and at the Irvington Presbyterian Church, where they presented their extensive research documenting local enslaved Africans. It was a wonderful and informative presentation. The committee is recommending a piece of art designed by Vinnie Bagwell and an accompanying plaque to be installed in the area of prominence and honor on Main Street along with other historical monuments. Also recently, we have given too little attention as a society to the names, identities, and experiences of enslaved Africans. Just as history tends to be written by the victors, so do our historical documents and monuments. I commend the village of Irvington for taking these steps and giving voice to the ones voiceless. If there's anything that the town of Greenberg can do to support this effort, please let me know, and I will endeavor to meet the need. Stay safe. S. Kenneth F. Jones, S. Quire, Councilman, Town of Greenberg. Thanks for that, Ken. If we need something, we'll definitely reach out and we'll definitely keep you in the loop as we move forward with that project. The other one is from Davud Etamare. It's about invasive vines. Invasive vines are stealing food from our trees, strangling our trees, and killing our trees, one by one, year after year, and right in front of our eyes. Thankfully, friends of the old croatian aqueduct have recognized this problem, and despite their limited resources, have tried their best to do something about it. My hope is that all residents in our area, in particular authorities and charged, to notice this problem, create public awareness about it, and do something about it. Again, it's from David Davud Etamare from Irvington. You might have, you know, some insight into that more than I do, but we definitely know it's a problem. I know we've, you know, the aqueduct is one place I know where they have organized efforts to take care of them. You know, I know our parks and rec have also tackled it in places like Memorial Park and other places in the village. But I think it is a big problem that probably isn't talked about that much.
Yeah, I mean, it's a twofold problem. One is what's here in the woods and along the open pathways, along the river, streambeds, and also the other, what gets sold at the nurseries. There are invasive plant lists now, and the... at the nurseries. There are invasive plant lists now, and the New York State DEC have made certain sales of certain plants illegal. But that doesn't mean that all the nurseries are conforming to that quite yet. So it's really good to take a look at what you're, if you're installing plants, it's great to take a look to be sure that you're supporting as many natives as possible and not implanting invasives such as barberry. And things like barberry and Japanese rose are both deer, not deer repellent, whatever the word, you know, they don't get eaten by deer very much at all. And so people in the past use them quite a bit. But anyways, apart from that, I'd also say that because of the issues of actually, the liability issues of removing vines when it's not on your property, and vines and invasives, I think you should be working with vine removal groups, such as the ones that are out of the Hastings and the ones coming out of the Sawmill River Coalition that periodically post to a lot of the various social media sites that they're having vine removal workshops and activities.
Great. Thanks for that, Mark. Any public comment about things not on the agenda? If you do, you can raise your hand and Larry will call upon you. Doesn't look like there are. So I will move to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments? It was just a minute, I believe. If not, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda if I can have a second.
I can.
All in favor?
I agree.
Next is the continuation of the public hearing to consider a local law amending the zoning code to create the North Broadway mixed-use district. You know, I think we kind of had two things tonight from our side. One was to kind of restate our, you know, why we're doing this. I think we've had that question a few times. And, you know, I think it's important to remind everyone why we're, why we're looking at this. And I think, to me, when we go back, even before the, you know, it obviously came out of the Comprehensive Plan Committee update. But I think the, even before that, when we were talking about bright view, the overwhelming consensus of residents was they want things to remain the same in that area. And by that, they typically, I understood it to mean the look of the area. The open, the open area, as you come in, there's that, you know, the grassy area. So you, you know, the quote, I think, was you know, you're in Irvington because it opens up there and it's not too busy and crowded. So, you know, what, what we did as a board, well, actually, before we take that back, the Comprehensive Plan Committee that looked at that particular area had the same goal. They basically said, you know, how can we possibly keep this the way it is now? Because what we've seen in the last 10 years, that things are changing. The office space use in Westchester County is, you know, there's a lot of vacancies. I think that's only going to get worse now with people figuring out they can work from home. You know, so I think that office space has become a less attractive use. And we've seen that in that particular area where you had, you know, a couple hundred people reporting to one building there in the 70s and 80s. And now it's dwindled down to, you know, maybe a couple dozen. So while it's great to say we want things to stay the same, economically, it's probably not feasible. We've had, you know, several pieces of property turn over there. We've had, we have another one that's on the market now. We've had, you know, the Abbott House was almost sold. People were looking at selling it. And it looked, you know, the most likely uses, we obviously had Bright View, Bright View come in and wanted to develop the land in the Carafiero property. Then we had a couple not-for-profits that were looking to buy Abbott House or Carafiero. And you think about it, it kind of makes sense. It's a lot cheaper when you don't have to pay taxes. So it makes it a lot more affordable. You know, so I think that we kind of said, how can we maintain what's there now, which is kind of what's built there now, and make that viable for the next, you know, however many years, another next 50 years. And that's what kind of the Comprehensive Plan came up with. So they came up with uses, they thought, for the commercial area, and that has been operated as a commercial district since probably the 60s, at least the 70s. You know, so for almost 50 years, that's been another commercial district in Irvington. And, you know, for the most part, people like those ideas. So, you know, I think what we did was we wanted to find, kind of update the uses, all of the current uses, it's still zoned as residential, that was never changed. But they're all operating under a mishmash of special permits and use variances and things like that. So it also makes the, the property less viable, because if someone wants to buy it, and they say, well, this isn't zoned for what it's being used for, you know, it's on a special, you know, special permit that's not even in the zoning code. So I think we wanted to say, A, legalize those things, and then say, well, what other uses might keep this a vibrant area or viable area for commercial use. And that's where, that's where all this came from. That's why we're doing this. That's what this, you know, that was our goal. You know, we felt, I think another part of it was, we wanted to do this ourselves and not have the whole process led by the next bright view that comes in and asks for things. And yes, we did just say no to them. But again, does that keep it viable? Or are we just going to be, you know, marching towards, you know, derelict buildings and/or, you know, only not-for-profits being able to use it, which obviously isn't great for the tax base? We saw the budget for the school, how they have to, you know, cut things that they wanted to do. It'd be even worse if we lost some of those larger commercial properties and they became non-for-profit, which you can't obviously ever completely prevent. But if we don't, if we do nothing, and those buildings become less and less valuable, then there's a chance that that's what would happen as well, because they don't have to pay taxes. So it makes it cheaper by definition. You know, I think where we're open to discussion and open for hearing is what uses the public wants for them. You know, we've had, I can't even count how many public hearings now to talk about uses. We've obviously come up with a list that we think are, you know, potentially, A, viable and B, acceptable to residents. You know, I think we've, you know, parred a lot back, we've eliminated some, we've added some, you know, we've been trying to find that balance. And that's why we're still here listening tonight. Mary Ann, did you also want to kind of update where we were in the process, or are we okay for now on that front?
No, I think, I think we were just gonna, you know, hear what else people had to say and then, you know, come up with another draft. My guess is not going to be a draft that changes a lot, but we do want to be responsive.
Okay. Anybody else want to add anything? Now that I've talked for a long time? Connie?
Your volume's off.
You're on mute.
Connie, you're on mute.
Okay. Yeah, I well said, Brian, about where we came, how we came to this. And the, that when you said the feel that you arrived, you arrived in Irvington, it had a sense of openness. I totally agree that that was a beginning point. And I would say also that, that sense of you, you've, you've arrived in Irvington, and it's not just the openness, it, there's a little more to it, which I think when people analyze that, it has something to do with the, the historic stone walls that you noticed particularly, and historic building. And it's a sense that I think people who live here, who come through that, you know, you have to eventually come through there many, many times if you live here. You feel this is part, very much part of your community. And one other thing that got discussed with this board quite a bit was that we felt that perhaps this was also a way to have another place for affordable housing, which is always mentioned as a problem for Irvington, that it's, it is quite difficult. Kids who grew up here, teachers, it's very hard for people to, to live here. So, so all those things I recall were on our minds, and I think still are. Thank you.
Thanks, Connie. Anybody else? Or should we open it up? I see one hand up already, Larry.
Yep. Leola? Leola, you're, if you unmute yourself. There you go.
Hi. Okay. I actually had, I was fumbling around trying to get my hands up relating to the invasive vine inquiry. And I will wait till later in the meeting when we have another public comment to give some ideas and suggestions and offer for support on that. In terms of the mix, the, the topic at hand for public comment, I just wanted to be sure that we're, again, considering our future, which is likely to have, you know, extreme weather events, climate disaster, and also the recognition of the current COVID and whatnot, about how very important it is to have safe walking, biking space for people. And it makes for a more connected community. Local merchants do better when there's a lot of foot and bike traffic. So I would say, and then also driverless vehicles and this sort of thing, which to be forward-thinking about what would work for our future in terms of climate resiliency, and, and the things that we would allow in this kind of space. Affordable housing could be, I don't know, a tiny home community, or, or something or other where it's very, very connected in terms of the community and walkability, bike, all those sort of things. So I just want to make sure we have provisions that are really forward-thinking that will, you know, enable us to weather storms, both physically for weather events, but also just as a community, what's going to serve us well for our future. That's it.
Thank you. Next up, Larry, Taylor Palmer?
Larry, you're mute.
Taylor, you're on.
Thank you, Larry, and Mayor Smith, the members of the board. It's good to see you all again. And I've been fighting the urge, although I'm not on video, to swing over to Connecticut for a haircut. I'm glad I'm not on camera for this evening, but still hiding away for now. I'm done. I'm very briefly here just to introduce my client Hannah Rubin and her brother David Rubensall. They're the owners of the Maxon property. And as all, you're all familiar, they did submit comments on Friday. I would ask, if possible, we do have David Smith and Susan Janchill on the call. Is there any chance that they might be able to be promoted to speaker just to be able to present the site plan that was included in Hannah's letter, Hannah and David's letter to this board?
Sure. All right. Yeah, just give me a second. Dave Smith, you said also, and Susan?
She's at the very bottom.
Yep, got it. Okay.
All right. And then we have Dave Smith, and then the, we also have our, the property owner Hannah Rubin, and she, and then I'm just going to turn my, my voice right over to Hannah and let her present as Susan has the site plans that were submitted. There were a number enclosed. There were plans that we submitted, you know, early in the process to talk about setbacks. But I would ask Susan briefly to touch on those after Hannah gives you a quick update. And thank you again for the opportunity this evening.
Thanks. Okay, Hannah's on, but she's...
Why is I reading my sign here? Because I have no idea what I'm doing. Totally confused.
We can see you, we can hear you. You're perfect.
Okay, good. All right. So I'm going to read, okay? I'm not really good being spontaneous. Good evening, Mayor Smith and members of the board. For the record, my name is Hannah Rubin, and tonight I'm joined by my brother David Rubensall. We are the owners of the Maxon property, and we appreciate the opportunity this evening to comment on this local law and all of your time working on this law over the past year. As you know, David and I sent a letter to your board on Friday, and we were going to read it, but believe it speaks for itself, and we hope that you'll have had the chance to review it and the additional visual analysis that we provided from our consultants, Susan and David, which obviously are also in the Zoom call. Instead, we would like to highlight some key points in support of keeping the proposed 50-foot setback, and to use this time to address some comments that have been made at the recent meetings. First, as much, you just, you just gave me my whole argument, Mayor Smith. First, as much as we wish there was, there is currently no interest in our property for office space. Office space was in abundance in Westchester County part of the pandemic, and now because of it, more and more companies are finding remote work will save them money on unnecessary office space. Since this is the case, we need different ways to viably develop our property. As our letter notes, the new setbacks limit development on almost 80% of our property. As compared to other properties in the proposed zoning district, this newly proposed 75-foot setback will heavily constrain our property, because we also have frontage on North Broadway that calls for a significant 250-foot setback. As a longstanding Irvington taxpayer, it's disappointing to see comments come in regarding this law at the final hour that appear to be against any viable, any viable repurposing of our property, or the other properties in this district that the village reviewed through the comp plan process. So while this newly proposed 75-foot setback may not seem like much, it actually triples the existing 25-foot setback, and has a major impact on our property. On that point, we wanted to make sure we showed how significant that impact is through our exhibits. To the end, well, as we just said, our consultants are on. We also wanted to turn back time, turn back the clock for a minute, and highlight that in 1979, when we moved to Irvington, we had 80 employees driving up and down the right-of-way that is now named Strawberry Lane. Abbott House was close to their capacity as well, using the road to bus their students each morning. We each utilize the unnamed road Strawberry Lane without any issues or complaints from neighbors. In fact, as a right-of-way, it is each owner's responsibility to care for. But as anyone who lives off the road knows, it is mostly maintained by Abbott House. Maxon has repaired and plowed as well. The uses, including assisted living facility, would not have a negative impact on this area. In fact, it would really be an improvement. We really do not understand the issue with making viable zoning for well-designed assisted living facility. These are quiet residences, and the owners of such facilities that have contacted us. We're looking for community like Irvington because of the residents they thought they could attract. This is not a negative, it is a positive. For-profit use. Assisted living facilities are important contributors to communities, and there is a known need in our area. A beautiful viable facility on our property could be something residents of Irvington can utilize for their own families or even themselves. Why do you have to be aged out of Irvington? So here we are at the final hour, after all of the issues recently raised by residents, and over the last year have been addressed. We are now facing increased setback restrictions that will prevent us from meaningfully and viably repurposing or adaptively reusing the Maxon property. With that background, we were just asking the board to consider our comments and our supporting analysis that shows the 50 feet, which is 100% more than existing, is more than sufficient setback along Strawberry Lane when you take into account all of the other protection, screening, et cetera, that the local law proposes. The village has determined as part of the comp plan that our board rate setback be 250 feet and our other setbacks be 50, not 75. Now, the recent comments have suggested the setbacks be increased from 50 to 75 when a property joins a residential district. Again, not to be redundant, but as previously stated, this proposal restricts development on almost 80% of our property. It is patently unreasonable for the Maxon property to be constrained so heavily. We're merely requesting that the village maintain the proposed setback at 50 feet as originally proposed. Thank you for your time, and I would like to turn it over to Dave Smith and Susan to briefly go over the plans we submitted on Friday.
I will share the plans that we submitted. Sharing the screen now. So you've all seen the, most of these exhibits before, where we were figuring out what kind of development could happen within the, within the setbacks and the area allowance, and then also the other restrictions or limits for development. What we added to this, one thing I wanted to point out is that these, the setback, this is what we're looking at at, adding that 75-foot setback here, it's sort of even more constraining any sort of flexibility in development on the site. So we just wanted to show what that meant in terms of, sorry, where that 75-foot line lands, and then how much of the site is still quote unquote "developable," or where the, the building could go. And you saw that last week. So this is where we were at prior to the suggestion of the 75-foot setback. And I think this is the exhibit that's really going to sort of state our case of, of what, what that just one more additional sort of straw that breaks the camel's back, is that we were at this place where we were like, okay, so we have around 31% of the property that's still within the, the, so the area that can be used for this site. If you pull it down to what was 75-foot setbacks, it ended up being 21% of the site could actually be used for, for some sort of development. When it was then suggested that, that this setback could be 50, and the other... and the other one 75 is what you see here. You know, we get it back up to 25%, but we were thinking that maybe another way of thinking about it is if we want to maintain that flexibility and if you did want to respond to those neighbors' requests for that 75-foot setback, you know, the 250-foot Broadway buffer is really extensive and a real burden on this property in particular. And if that's, there's that flexibility to maintain, you know, around a 30% usability, one solution might be to make it a 200-foot Broadway buffer, and then you have that 75-foot setback. So one thing I wanted to point out with this, it's neither one is more preferable to us. We're just trying to figure out how to maintain that viability that Hannah was talking about, and also not to eliminate any viable use, but even more so, you know, from a landscape, from a designer's and a, and a urban planner, urban designer's perspective. All these restrictions really limit the flexibility for a designer to come in and actually propose something that, that might address other things that you want to see here, like actually having a quality piece of architecture. You know, each of these restrictions start to make it that, that the building will be designed by the zoning instead of having some flexibility to actually apply a design. So it's not saying that the zoning will guarantee a wonderful design, but it can really limit the, the potential for, for design to come in. Another thing I just wanted to mention with that 200-foot setback idea, you know, bringing the, the area a little bit down the hill sort of gives a little breathing space to the, to the existing mansion house. This way, you can actually see the mansion house from a distance. You have a little bit more space between the mansion house and, and the actual building, potential building. Of course, this is all very conceptual and all very theoretical. But you can see on, on this section is that you actually get a little bit of breathing room here to actually have that visibility to the mansion house. And one other thing I just wanted to reiterate that we had actually submitted back in, I think it was for, it was in. Yeah, it was in September. That we were actually trying to figure out the parameters and really what could be done in this site and what the effects and the impact would be on the visuals from, from Broadway. And we submitted this, this little diagram and then some visual diagrams of if it was that 200-foot setback, and let's say it was this big wide building that you could see from Broadway along that 200-foot setback. This would be the existing, this would be the two-story building at that 200-foot setback, and this is the two, two-story building with additional vegetation on top of what already exists. So what we were trying to demonstrate here is that there's a potential to actually, you know, screen any development from Broadway that was determined to be not, not, you know, a beneficial view from Broadway. So, so we think that, that that's a potential option in order to have that, that sort of give and take of, of, you know, the screening where the people who commented and who, who, when you switched it to that 75-foot, you know, addressing that concern without, you know, what, what we really think is taking away a viable use for the site. And it's, it's getting too restrictive each piece by piece. David, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just, I'm going to be very, very brief. And Mayor, I just want to thank you for your opening remarks regarding the proposed legislation and why the village was going, is going through this exercise. It's not an easy process because there are multiple concerns that you're trying to weigh and balance with respect to meeting goals, objectives from the comprehensive plan, particularly the view shed from Broadway corridor, but at the same time trying to respect the concerns for property owners, in particular the Maxon group, and how their property could be repurposed at some point in the future. And I think our preference would be to, to maintain the 50-foot setback, but lacking that, we feel that the, you know, there needs to be flexibility for a project to, whatever may be proposed, but there needs to be flexibility so that it could be appropriately accommodated. And as Susan mentioned, with great care on architectural design and not necessarily let the zoning parameters dictate the design of the building. So that's, I think, you know, and the, the chart that Susan has up there, I think is pretty compelling that once you start applying all of the setbacks, you're, you're essentially eliminating viable uses for the property. So I think what we're asking for is let's provide some flexibility with the understanding that through good design, you can have a good project, a good outcome for both the village and for Hannah and David. So that's my summary. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, we appreciate the opportunity to be able to present our screen. You know, of course, as mentioned by our, our client this evening and the owners of the property, really looking to, to maintain the proposed 50-foot setback that this board proposed, increasing over the 25-foot setback. And alternatively, if a 75-foot setback is proposed, both on Strawberry Lane and to the rear of the property is adjoining or adjoining residential, single-family, that that be, that the Broadway, the Broadway setback be set back to 200 feet rather than 250 feet. And then alternatively, we also mentioned one other option. This was in our, our prior correspondence. But just because that there are only two properties in this district that are subject to this large 250-foot setback, whereas Abbott House and others may not be that also still a butt our residential districts, there may be an opportunity that, for a property that is on a Broadway buffer, or excuse me, has a 250-foot Broadway setback, that they only be restricted in their rear setback joining residential properties. Because again, they're already very heavily restricted. But again, we appreciate all of you taking our, our comments collectively as a team this evening, and we know you have a busy agenda. So we just wanted to be thankful and hopefully support those, you know, maintaining the 50-foot setback as proposed.
Thank you very much. Then we did receive the letter and we, I know we all read it, so thank you for that.
Brian, could I ask one question to Taylor? Taylor, are you just saying that an acceptable alternative would be for you guys, 75 feet on the west? I mean, yes, 75 feet on the west only?
So the west being the, I guess it would be the adjoining.
Residential property, yeah.
Yes, yes. So that, that would be 75, and then we would reduce the setback on Broadway to 50 because we, because we again have a 250-foot setback on Broadway.
Okay. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
And again, that would only impact our property and one in the adjoining Carafiele property. Because again, Abbott House, for example, does not have that same limitation. They are not, they do not have a 250-foot setback like the Maxon property. So this regulation would, would recognize that the properties fronting on Broadway are most constrained by the zoning regulation and would allow at least that limited flexibility on the 75-foot setback. You know, pointing out what Hannah had mentioned that, you know, again, Strawberry Lane has been utilized by office users and Abbott House users for many, many years for these commercial purposes. So all we're, all that we're trying to get is a better design, and that's really through, you know, some limited level of flexibility. But that also makes sure to ensure that properties like the rabies, you know, located east of the, of the Maxon property are, you know, substantially setback further from the Maxon property and others on Strawberry Lane further up would still be. And those properties aren't subjected to this massive 250-foot setback. So we, we thought that might be a good way to adjust it here. And again, it's just, it's just a suggestion as an alternative if 50 feet is not realizable by the sport on both, both setbacks.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right. I think we have a couple more people with their hands up.
Yep. So there's one, there's one labeled Galaxy Note 8. So if you could allow a talk, if you want to introduce yourself.
Hey, Francis Goudy here, also known as Galaxy Note 8. I'm in the same galaxy as you guys, but Brian, you opened up with a definition of our side. Or rather, rather, a statement how our side started. Who's our side, by the way?
Our side? That, I meant the way the village is going about this.
Okay, not, not that you're on an opposite side from the property owners around on North Broadway, right?
No, no, not on that side of anybody.
That rang right away, and I wondered. A question, is there an implicit guarantee that commercial property owners will be insulated from market forces by village government?
No.
Okay, good. That's, that's what I thought. You know, I, I deal with the Broadway buffer because I live on Broadway, and it's just something that other people who don't live on Broadway have to deal with. But going into my purchase, I knew what I was dealing with, and I expect that these professional property owners know this. Regarding the Comprehensive Plan Committee, I was on the North Broadway group, and I made clear then that the mandate to commercialize this current one-family zoning was misplaced. I still believe it's misplaced, and the cart might be a bit ahead of the horse here. A number of us were not informed fully of what was going on. And I know that you have routine noticing, but I didn't, I didn't receive the kind of noticing that I would get if, for instance, my neighbor wanted to build a three-car garage. That neighbor would have to send me a registered letter. And you guys sort of moved pretty hard and fast on this ahead of the community. Another point.
Francis, can I just ask one question? Since you like to do this back and forth, but how long have you been, how long has this process been going on?
However long it's been going on, Brian, not enough of us were aware of how far and how, how radical the change was, okay?
We haven't, I took. It's still going on. We don't even know when it's going to end. So I just don't understand how it can be hard and fast.
Well, Brian, we don't know when COVID is going to end. We don't know when the protests are going to end. There are a lot of things we don't know when they're going to end. Anyway, it seems that the property owners laboring under the assumption that the community is already on board with this radical change from one-family zoning, and the details simply remain. I don't think that you should be leading them down this road that, that we're all happy with this. There's something like 62 signatures on, on the last, on the last emailed letter opposing this effort. This isn't trivial. 62 people is a lot of people. That's a lot of property owners. I would like Maxon to get everything they, they'd like to get in the world, and I, I feel bad that they're spending all the money on lawyers and engineers and architects that they are. However, there's no guarantee that when they set into this that, that the community is on board with it. And I think the community is not on board, and you guys kind of got ahead a little bit without bringing us, the community, up to speed. Sorry.
So Francis, this is, to me, this is the crucial question. What would you personally like to see on that site?
Me personally?
Yep.
Well, this is different from what everybody I signed. I, I would say 1F20. Why not? You get 1F20 to the east, you get 1F20 to the south, you get 1F20 to the west. Why not 1F20? It's identical.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, so.
Joy is, Joy is waiting to speak next, so.
Yep. Okay. Joy's on.
You're muted.
Did you, why are you still muted?
This is Joy. I'm not in the same place as Francis, so I, I've heard the Maxon owner state, we just can't sell our property. As you know, there are many homeowners in Irvington who can't sell their properties. I don't understand why we would be changing zoning laws for one property owner who can't sell their property. Isn't this setting a dangerous precedent? Because I can go, I think there's three properties in my immediate neighborhood up for sale. I could sell my property tomorrow if you would change my zoning so I could build another house on the back of my property. I mean, I know my neighbor on Sunnyside and Ferris probably could build another house on their property. Are you going to change the zoning for us because we can't sell our houses? Yet, this, this commercial owner is, her sole excuse is, I can't sell my property. I'm going to say to her exactly what you'd say to me, lower your price and you'll sell it, okay? Don't ask us as village residents to make concessions for you because if you make a concession for her, then I'm coming right behind her to ask you to make a concession for me so I can sell my property at the price I want. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Peter.
Okay. Hello, can you hear me?
Hey, Peter, loud and clear.
Hi, Brian. Thank you. I have another comment about the bulk of the, the allowable bulk. And it does relate to what the Maxons planners were saying. First of all, I had sent a letter before the last meeting and an email previous to that about what the interpretation of the commercial allowable bulk would be. And it seems clear to me that it should be based on the building coverage in an IF40 zone, but that was never clarified. So I wonder if I could get an answer to that now because my comments are based on that. Since it is a 1F40 zone, why wouldn't any commercial bulk be based on the coverage for a 1F40 zone? Is there an answer?
I'd have to defer to Mary Ann on that.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I thought I explained this last time. But anyway, yeah, it would be, technically, you're right. It would be 1F40 by default. But it, it only because in rezoning that, it was overlooked that there were commercial things. So technically, but right now, we're trying to come up with coverage things that make, make sense irrespective of that. So I think originally, when the, the planner, you know, was figuring out what the maximum coverage was, she used 15% because that was what was allowed for institutional uses. And I think the, the one, the other, the other number came from what coverage would have been allowed when they got the variance to use the property. But it's sort of, anyway, so that, that's how those numbers were reached. I guess if, if they were coming in now, I think it would, it would be a question that would probably may end up being resolved perhaps by the zoning board for an interpretation on what the coverage should be because there are no coverage limits in there for commercial use. And the, given the other uses in the district that have different coverage limitations, the limitation for a one-family house doesn't make sense anyway. But barring that, yeah, the 1F40.
Okay, so, well, the lot coverage doesn't only, doesn't exclude, doesn't say it's exclusively for residential use. It says for any allowable uses, but let's.
Peter, but nowhere in there, there was, commercial wasn't in allowable use in the district. It came in by variance.
All right. So let me get to my main point because I'm, and I'm coming off a letter to the editor that the entire board sent to the River Towns Enterprise on March 20th, I believe. And they said that the, let me get the correct words. That the proposed rezoning will result in significantly less development. That the proposed rezoning will result in significantly less development than the current zoning allows. And I think that has been a point of the board from the beginning, from the first presentation. And I feel it's very misleading, so let me explain why to everyone who might be listening. The... In these residential zones, there's a special, there are special allowables for what I call community facilities, which are namely places of worship, parish houses, religious school buildings, schools, public libraries, museums, art galleries, community centers, and not-for-profit annual membership clubs. They get to build much more than any other allowable use gets to build. And... So the board seems to be comparing, that's two or three times as much as a residence or an allowable commercial use could build. The board seems to be saying they're not allowing as much as those community facilities can build now.
Which are on five of the six properties.
Not.
Well, not where the little house is, which is on the Abbott House property, the Holy Spirit property. Abbott House, Holy Spirit, on the two big one, okay.
Only on those two.
Yeah, and Maxon, the recognition was Maxon is building as much as they could now. That's not expanding. I mean, you know what, this discussion, part of the problem with it is, and it's something that the board is addressing in that the zoning doesn't match the uses there. What happened was they had zoning for it, then these uses came in, got variances, and because of the variances, the zoning was redone. So this process hopefully is coming up with reasonable numbers for the development.
Well, yeah, if you let me get to my point, it's not. It's not, because basically, the board is introducing a lot of commercial uses but raising the allowables to very close to the community facility allowables. So it's vastly increasing the amount that could be built now on the site for anything except for a community facility. And a community facility is normally higher because it's normally special. Specifically on Maxon, the building coverage is higher under the new zoning than it is under the current zoning. And the gross floor area is about the same. Maxon can cover, now by the new zoning, they can legally cover 34,000 square feet, whereas under the current zoning, they could cover with buildings 26,000 square feet. And the amount of gross floor area is the same as a community facility, that is, church, school, library, museum, blah, 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 could cover, but they can do it with a commercial building, which is not usual. So I just want to get it straight to everyone and to the community that the board is in fact vastly increasing the allowable bulk on those properties. That's my point. And let me make a quick other point. Also in that letter, it was said that because of the... You would have a web driveways if we allowed the existing zoning. Let me find the exact words. So... If you had single-family development and since single-family zones exclude driveway from coverage calculations, it means that a web of driveways branching out from Broadway would be a likely feature of single-family development. I just want to point out that on the two Broadway sites, the Carafiele and the Maxon, only four units, only four residential units are allowed now because the density factor is 40,000. So you're not gonna get a web of driveways with only four residential homes there. But this zoning increases it from four units to 32 units, requiring 48 parking spaces. So that's where you're going to get a lot more driveway, a lot more parking, a lot more access to garages, and so on and so forth. So... I just wanted to make those two bulk points and also say that it would be appreciated if you guys would respond to the letter the 62 people sent signs last week, point by point, because there are a lot of strong points there. I think that's it for me.
I actually thought we had gone through that letter pretty much at our last meeting.
You read it verbatim, but you didn't respond to it.
I felt that we had addressed most of it through the, we'll look at it again to see what we haven't addressed, but I felt like we had we had, you know, kind of addressed most of the points in the letter already. But we'll take a look at it again. Thank you, Peter.
All right. Thank you.
Next up is Chris Wall.
Okay. Prompted by meeting. Good evening, board. Thank you very much for having public comment on this important issue. One thing that strikes me is every time we talk about the way it is now or the way it's zoned, the board seems to say, "Well, we want to do this new thing, this new zoning, because the way it is now." What's wrong with leaving it the way it is now or letting it be developed the way it's zoned? Why should there be a third option? What's wrong with those two options?
I think we talked about that at the beginning, how, you know, we want to try to maintain the open look and we feel that, I think you were on the board when they came with the proposal for the, and I think also the Carafiele property is grandfathered in at 1F20 as well, so they can actually build more than four houses. So that was part of their, part of the issue. They actually have a subdivision plan. I believe that's still grandfathered in.
I was not?
I thought it was. Okay.
No, the grandfathering ended, I think, at some point. I forgot, because they didn't go forward with the plan.
The change of the ownership, maybe?
No.
And there was two of the plans.
It was dependent on that particular plan.
Well, that's, I mean, if you remember that proposal, Chris, it was, I think that's why, you know, most of this board, I won't speak for myself, but most of this board doesn't like the idea of single-family homes there because of that, you know, the potential for, you know, I think we referred to it as ski slopes at the time. You know, and I think that, you know, I think what we, potentially, the thing that we wanted to try to get ahead of also is something we talked about, I think back when you were on the board as well, was trying to find out what we want as a community, which is why we keep having meetings to find out what the community wants and not have Brightview come in and tell us what they want to build, which, you know, in some ways is easier because then you're only responding to one design. But it's, I did not enjoy that process. You know, I thought that if we could get ahead of this and come up with some community consensus on what we wanted to see there, because I do think we want to try to maintain the look of what's there now. That's the whole purpose of doing all this, is trying to maintain some of that open space to potentially develop some additional, you know, affordable housing, maintain some of the historic structures, all those things, which to me, you know, if you have just single-family homes, you're not gonna get any affordable housing. If you have single-family homes, you'll likely lose most of those historic buildings, at least the smaller ones. Those are some of the things we're trying to accomplish with this.
Yeah, no, I understand that and just to make sure the record's straight, I was not on the board when we upzoned Carafiele from 120 to 140. That was before I was on the board, but I was on the board for Brightview. So, and you make a good point about saying why you keep having so many public hearings because you really want to hear from the community and I think that is really important. The problem is the community doesn't really pay that much attention as I remember when I was on the board and we look out often to completely empty rooms. We're the kind of community where before COVID, people are community New York City. These days, both parents are working. We are a bedroom community in New York City, where you go when the city's schools don't work for your family. And, you know, so we know that, so people are very busy. And I know people don't realize that this is going on because every time I reach out to people in the community, they are very surprised. I also know for a fact from a lot of people who now see what happened on the Sawmill Parkway with, I don't know if it's called River Towns or the Starbucks, let's basically call it that. On the Sawmill, people were shocked the day they woke up and saw that, in Dobbs Ferry even. Meanwhile, there'd been a lawsuit, Ardsley sued Dobbs for a million dollars for the kind of traffic and impact they're going to have. So much went on for people who are engaged in this part of their community, but a lot of people just don't know. And so that brings me to what might be, I think, maybe a good idea. It seems to me that the board started three years ago working on this, putting together a committee, working with the Affordable Housing Group, and then changing, modifying the comprehensive plan. It seems that it's been very methodical and systematic, crossing all the Ts, dotting all the Is, marching toward doing a complete sweeping rezoning of the northern corridor. And if that's the case, and if it is a fait accompli, as far as this board is 100% committed to this, then I think at that point, we should put it on the ballot in November as a referendum so that we can really make sure that everybody in the community is aware of what's going on and can see the plans and can see that it's going to change and it's going to be different than it is now and it's not going to be how it's zoned. And I'll add one other thing because this is something that's been frustrating too, is when we talk right now, I just heard that people want to develop Hannah's property. Already we're saying, "Well, they're already negotiating or doing the dance," as we used to call it. But you see, you guys are holding the cards because it's not zoned for what they want to do. So they have to keep trying and asking and begging and pleading and negotiating. They can't just shove it down Irvington's throats and they can't just start suing. See, once you get the deep-pocketed developers and they have the zoning, now they want to do things that's properly zoned for, that's when they can sue you, the kingdom come. Right now, Irvington's holding all the cards because it's not zoned that way. And I also don't understand why we can't do it intelligent, I don't know why I use that term, but piece by piece, as there are proposals, does that proposal make sense for our village? Well, okay, that's smart urban planning, but to sweepingly rezone the whole corridor so that now you can't pick and choose what's good for your residents? It doesn't make any sense. And I guess I'm trying to understand why sweeping rezoning.
I think what we're trying to do is, rather than have another two-year Brightview proposal, if we tell people, you can, we, you know, as a community, and that's the big key here, is we want to hear what the community wants to see there. We like to have that in the code, so that way we don't have somebody come in with a Starbucks proposal because they say, "Hey, this was just rezoned." So they're not gonna be, they could still try to do it, but I think it's very easy for a board to say, "Hey, if it's not in the rezoning that we spent three years working on, you know, that's not something we want to talk about." And that's what we meant about trying to get ahead of it and trying to prevent the next Brightview situation. And that's why we're trying to do it. But to me, part of that key is obviously identifying what the community wants. And that's, you know, I think the thing, you know, that we hear the most is, "Don't do anything, just leave it that way." We could do that and then we could have a Brightview for, like Maxon could come in with a proposal from someone and they'll have another two-year, you know, bogged-down process. That's why if we could figure out now what we want, I think that that's a lot more productive for everyone going forward and that's what we're trying to do.
But it's hard to know what you want on, you know, all four parcels. Once you need to know what you have on one, then you'll know more about what you want on, you know, two, three, and four. You're not gonna get to pick and choose once the whole, when they're all rezoned. Then we lose the power.
We lose the power to have a use, but we still have, you know, a power to have, you know, planning and all those types of things done. The secret review, all those types of things. So that's why, to me, it's, what we're trying to legislate are size and uses right now. The details will be, you know, as part of the planning process and that's what we think. That's why, to me, it's, you know, every time I talk to someone about this, I'm like, "What would you like to see there?" And, you know, I think the one thing we keep saying is, we don't have confidence in the fact that, you know, that the Carafiele property is always just gonna be office space, the Maxon property is always just gonna be office space, especially when they're 50% filled and, you know, there's no traffic impacts because, you know, because they're 50% filled, it's because of the economics right now. You know, so I think that if we can get, if we could all agree that there's uses we'd like to see there, then that's what we're really trying to do and that's what we're trying to, you know, come together. I mean, I'd like to ask you, other than single-family homes, are there any other uses you would like to see there?
No, I definitely think it should be either left the way it is because that's fair, everybody's got their special permits or variance or whatever they have and that's their right and that's fine. Or how it's used, how it's zoned. I think that that's the only thing that is fair. Because otherwise, you have people who get to make an exponential profit on their land, then they go away and we're all left holding the bag. We're left holding the increased demand on our municipal services, right? Our firefighters, police, EMS. We're the ones left with trying to mitigate whatever kind of increased traffic there is, what impervious surfaces have been created that are not what the rest of us have to deal with. We've talked about that before. So we're the ones left with a lower quality of life while they've made, you know, a multiplier of profit on their property. And I don't think that's fair to us. And when you say, "What would you like to see there?", we don't need anything there.
But.
And we certainly don't need more competition for our restaurants.
Well, I mean, we already, we almost saw Abbott House and Carafiele get sold to a nonprofit that would have had a big drain in our community as well. So I don't think we can just put our head in the sand and say, "It's just gonna be great if we don't do anything." I think that's the other, that's the big piece of this too, as well as saying, you know, as a board, we've said for a long time, we'd love to see some additional affordable housing. And this is, I mean, how many other pieces of property in the town could have any kind of affordable housing? Not many, you know. You know, we're lucky we got some at Marker Ridge, but, you know, there's not that many largely valuable pieces of land left. And, you know, if we just sit back and, you know, say, "Let them build four houses", we get zero affordable housing, we just get four more houses. That would probably be the best-case scenario. And it wasn't just, you know, it's not rented for three years and then they have a fire sale and it's bought by a not-for-profit, but then it completely comes off the tax rolls, which is probably the more likely scenario because that's, several of the potential buyers we've seen recently have been not-for-profits because they don't care about what the taxes are, so it's easy for them.
What kind of numbers are we talking? What's the differential of what? Well, I don't want to say Carafiele because I guess it's KEF who's actually one of, so sorry, suit anyway. What kind of different numbers are we talking? Because the community doesn't seem to be complaining about taxes and maybe the board thinks that the community is more upset about our village taxes than we are. We really are into a quality of life.
Well, it's not the village, it's school taxes as well, obviously, but I hear a lot of people complain about school taxes, especially, village taxes as well. But, you know, I think we could probably go on like this all night.
Yeah, so what about my referendum idea? Because you're right, we're getting the weeds out, we need to be doing that.
And you probably remember, I think it came up during Brightview as well, there's only certain things that you can actually referendum, Mary Ann, do you have that list? It's a very short list, I think.
Yeah, there's, under state law, there are certain types of issues that require a referendum, others that permit it. And unless you're on one of those lists, you can't have, there's several controller opinions that say that you can't have a referendum unless it's provided for in the law. And this wouldn't fall into one of the permitted issues.
Land use?
Yes.
Rezoning?
Yes.
And which law is that? Where is that? Is that in the municipal?
Yeah, it's in controller's opinions. And the basis of it is, it's the cost of referendum. And the basis of it is, it costs tax, referendum, well, it doesn't matter with the basis of it. Essentially, it costs taxpayers lots of money and unless the law allows it, unless the law allows it either by permission or requires it, it's not allowed. If you want me, well, you can look up the controller's opinions yourself. Just look up controller opinions referendum and you'll see. This has come up several times, you know, in the last 10 years.
Right, and in other towns too, right, in other villages and all throughout New York State, right?
I think only...
As a New York State law, no, if they, once in a while, actually, I have seen them have referendum, a referendum here and there, but it's not...
Like if we were going to spend $10 million on a firehouse or something like that, that's typically on a referendum. If we were buying a piece of property to build a new, you know, emergency service complex or something like that. I've seen those.
Right.
In terms, Chris, in terms of which things do allow referendum? Yeah, I think that's in the general municipal law. If you go to the general municipal law and look up referendum.
Right, you can do it, either the board can do it or you can do it by petition for the permissive.
No, no, not on every issue, no. Not on every issue.
So the board, so the board has thought it was a good idea? Your board thought it was a good idea and looked into it and found that it's prohibitive? Is that the case?
Well, we didn't look at it in this case. It's just, it's sort of, actually, it's pretty basic municipal law that you can only have referenda on the items that the state law allows. Point is, that's why you elect elected officials to make decisions for the community.
But it's things like now, the community...
The next election, vote them out. No offense, guys, no invitations, but I guess that's the thinking.
Um, so I guess I'm asking, could we ask the board to definitely look into if it's possible to put this on a referendum and tell us definitely yes or no if it's possible?
I don't think we've even discussed if we think it's something that we'd want to because we, you know, we haven't discussed it as a board. I'll put it that way because we thought it was a nonstarter, but I'd be happy to look into it further to see if it's a possibility.
I'd really appreciate that. Thanks a lot, guys, and thank you for your time.
Sure, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, well, the public meeting will continue. Please tell your friends that don't know about the zoning change. If each of you tell three people, we can, we get this done. There's 22 of you, there's 60 there. If they tell three, you can have everybody informed before our next meeting when we'll have the next public hearing. So thank you all for that. We will keep that open and we'll move to open a public hearing to consider the local law, meaning the local landmark chapter of the Village Code. I'll make a motion if I can have a second.
Okay.
All in favor? Public hearing's now open. Mary Ann, did you want to walk us through the proposal?
Yeah, I guess it's in January 2018 that the village enacted local landmark law. It's important to recognize that nobody has, no property has been designated a local landmark and nobody's applied yet to be a local landmark, so this isn't apply, this law does not apply to anybody that's currently got the status. And what it does is it clarifies, which is certainly the understanding of the board, but clarifies that if you, if your property is declared a local landmark or designated a local landmark, that that designation runs with the property. And then it also has a requirement that that landmark status be filed with the county clerk's office so that anybody who would buy the property subsequently would be on notice that there is that local landmark on the property. That's what this law does. Again, just to repeat, it's not going to affect anybody right now. Nobody has applied for local landmark status, so. And there's not been anything designated.
This one is fairly straightforward, but does anybody on the board have questions or want to make any comments? If not, I will open this one up to public comment as well. Give everybody a minute to figure out how Zoom works. There we go, Earl Ferguson.
Yes, you're on.
Loud and clear, Earl.
Hi, everyone.
How are you?
In discussing this change with some folks at the Historical Society recently, it hadn't, somehow I was not able to explain or some of us weren't really clear about the part where an owner has the right to request the reversal of the designation. That is still a part of the law, isn't that correct?
Yeah, that's not being changed. That's not being changed. It's not in this law because it's not relevant. This law just has the correct sections in it. So under it, there is a provision, I think I read it at the last meeting, that, you know, that if you want to have the local landmark designation undesignated, you apply to the board the same way you did to have it designated.
Okay, and it wasn't clear, quite clear. It might be, you know, if you explain it to me in a way, you know, where I can share it with other...
Let me just, let me give you the second, the section, Earl. It's, okay, Section 144-3F called rescission. The Board of Trustees may rescind any designation of a local landmark using the same procedure as the local landmark designation. So that's Section 144-3, paragraph F.
Yeah, all right. Well, I guess if the designation is made in the first place by the property needing certain, you know, specific criteria, which is listed in the law as it's written. That criteria is all about the, first of all, needing historic significance in a manner that would be considered valuable to the village or, you know, it would have benefits to the greater community. And it meets that criteria, so then it receives its designation. If someone buys the historic property and wishes to have it reversed, the designation reversed, do they make an application and basically try to undo or make an effort to undo the criteria on which it was designated? What is the process there exactly?
Well, we never, we never got into the process, which is a little premature since nobody's ever applied to be designated, but it just says it can be rescinded and you go through the same process. And I suppose the board could say, hey, listen, you know, you've got this designation because we let you build, you know, 25% more coverage on your property, you know. You haven't, you got that advantage and so, you know, it's not going to be, we're not going to rescind it. They don't have to rescind it. Or they could say, you know, okay, you want it rescinded, undo the 25% extra you got. I mean, I...
Yeah, I guess it was unclear about, you know, by what means does it run? It doesn't, the designation doesn't run by means of the deed or anything, isn't that true?
No, that's the point of this law. It would be, it would be the designate, it could be an deed. I mean, it's possible that the board makes it a condition that you, you know, you included in your deed. We've done that on important conditions, but if they don't, what would happen is the designation would get filed against your property. Let's say your property's 19 Sheldon Street and you have this designation. So you file something at the county clerk's office, somebody buys the house, somebody's interested in buying the house and they go see, you know, the documents related to 19 Sheldon Street and they're going to see this designation and they know then it's clear that their property is burdened by their designation. Just like any condition on a property that's recorded.
Okay, so if a new owner feels that the designation encumbers development of the property, then all they need to do is come to the board and ask for relief and it will be granted?
No, I'm sorry, Earl, no. They would have to convince the board that it should be rescinded.
I guess I'm asking by what means, by what means is it reversed? I can't explain it to people when they ask me. And how does that benefit the village if it's easily reversed?
Nobody said it's easily reversed. It said you have to go through the same process. And my guess, it would be, if I were on a future board, it would depend on whether they got something for that local landmark designation. Presumably most people would get something in exchange, which is why they're doing it.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Pete, Peter? Yeah, there we go. Okay.
Well, I'm just picking up, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just picking up on what Earl just said. It sounds as though the question is, when you want to get it undesignated, do you have to prove that it wasn't worthy? And how could you possibly do that if you...
Well, you know what?
Well, let me finish.
It's all academic because that is not in the law tonight. This law has nothing to do with that. That was enacted in the law that was enacted in January 2018.
I thought you said that your proposal is supposed to be reversible by going back to the board.
No, no, that's what's in the law now, Peter. The law, what I just read to Earl was from the existing law. All this law does is puts any future buyer of the property on notice that there is a local landmark designation connected with the property.
Okay, very good. So long.
Anybody else? Anybody on the board? Otherwise, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing if I can have a second. All in favor? Let's pull this up here, hang on a second. Stop printing things out. It's actually very short. Took me much longer to scroll than it will to read. Results adopt the local law, meaning the local landmark chapter of the Village Code. I'll make a motion if I can have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Next up is authorizing a tax sorcery settlement with KEF Holdings LLC. Anybody have any questions on this? Otherwise, I'm going to go ahead and read. Whereas petitions have been filed by KEF Holdings LLC challenging real property tax assessments on the town of Greenberg's assessment rolls with respect to the subject property for 2019 tax year. Property owner KEF Holdings LLC, 88 North Broadway for 2019. Whereas petitioners' actions are now pending in Supreme Court, Westchester County. Whereas the town, the village, and the petitioner have reached a mutually agreeable resolution. Now therefore, the village is authorized to effectuate a settlement commensurate with the following terms. For 2019, original assessment, $5,316,500. Revised assessment, $4.5 million. Deduction of $816,500. The village's verbiage share of the refund is $6,382.91. I'll make the motion if I can have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Next up, our reports of boards, standing committees, and officers. Trustee liaison reports. Mr. Gill, answer.
Nothing new except to remind folks that GPTF now has a mailing list events that relate to climate change, climate mitigation, and relate to other sorts of issues like food scrap recycling and so forth. And I'm not sure, but I think you can get on it by going to the GPTF pages. And it's, you know, I get something maybe once every couple of weeks from them, so it's not really an annoyingly high-frequency type of thing, but useful information.
Great. Dr. Lawton?
That's it for me.
The Recreation Department is excited to announce that the Memorial Tennis Courts will be opened as of Monday, June 8. Joe's worked pretty hard on trying to get this done. At this point, it will be for village residents only, online registration only, singles play only. Two courts will be used every day, weather permitting. The bathrooms are not available. Registration begins on Thursday, June 4. Information on how to register and all rules will be posted on Wednesday morning. There will be staff supervisors present at all times. Registration time slots will start at 8:00 a.m. and the last slot will start at 8:30 p.m. To contact, email questions to jarchino@irvingtonewyork.gov and use Memorial Tennis on the subject law. The office is not open to the public at this point, but it is staffed from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Monday through Friday. As I said, no public in the building yet. The senior bus should arrive in the next few weeks. We are starting the process to sell the old bus. They're working on a drive-in movie, a tentative date on Friday, June 26, in coordination with Bill Thompson. Food distribution continues every week using the upstairs with the rec department. And please follow all the rules in the parks. Thank you.
Great. Jess?
Jess from the Fire Department. As of May 28, there were 14 calls for the month and 106 calls year-to-date. A lot of attention to COVID-19 protocols. There's a good supply of N95 masks and they're getting PPE, working with the county to get PPE for all active members. Apparatus in truck room getting defected at least once a day. Marine Force is in service, it's in Terrytown because the Everton Boat Club still is pending. Training, VFIS training is available and members are taking courses. And I can personally attest to the activity of the department because several members were in my house on Saturday morning because there was a gas leak detected on Route 9. And it was quite impressive how many vehicles converged. I thought it was another birthday party, but no. Anyway, that was very quickly taken care of, but everybody was right on it and what they needed to do.
I should add my little report about the Theater Commission has been continuing to meet, though the theater is, of course, closed. They have, right, but they have virtual activities online and they are very interested in discussions about possible ways in which the theater can get involved under the current circumstances in the entertainment of the village. So they would like to keep in touch with our board and with the administrator about possible things that they can do.
Great. So I think that's everybody on the trustees side. The Village Administrator's report.
Okay, you know, the last two trustees just went out of order. I want to point that out. I know, it's hard to tell.
It's sitting in the same order.
We have to move them on the screen for me, Larry.
Exactly, yeah. I don't think I could do that. So we've, much of the village staff has returned back to the offices and back to work. Not that we weren't working, but on a full, more full-time basis in the office. There still, of course, are, you know, offices and buildings that are not being used, like the library, for example. The theater, as you mentioned. And we are working on a plan towards reopening our buildings on a limited basis to the public. We have some measures that we've put in place and some things we have to further fine-tune. But we're working on that. And one other point, just to raise your awareness about it, we are awaiting further guidance as to... as to the extension of the video conference capability for public meetings. We think that's set to expire sometime in the middle of June, we're not sure if it will be extended, or if it, in fact, has been extended through some confluence of executive orders that we haven't deciphered yet. So there is a possibility that we'll have to consider some sort of a return into a public meeting setting, but again, that remains to be seen, and what form it'll take, we're not sure, and, and when that'll happen, we're not sure. Just wanted to bring that to your attention.
I might have to get some pants, I'm just wearing shorts all those meetings now.
I will see.
That's it. Yep. Village Clerk Treasurers report.
Well, the tax bills were sent out, and we're very happy that we're able to include a notice on there that due to the governor's executive order, the village's request for an extension was granted. And what that means is that we've extended the penalty-free period 21 days, that residents may take advantage of that. So it gives an allowance to pay by July 21st without penalty. It's my understanding, it's really only a handful of, you know, villages that have asked for it, there are no other ones within the River Towns were the only one that requested that, and I thought it was a very good thing to do for our residents, and those that need to take advantage of it can do that.
Great. Village Attorneys report.
I don't have a report.
Public comments. Okay, review of action items. Is there anything, Larry?
I don't, I didn't write anything down, other than we will be publicized in the, the tax due date extension. As Brenda said, there's a notice in the, in with the bills, but we'll publicize it further.
Don't forget to vote in the school board election.
Aren't we supposed to review the petition letter and be sure we've covered everything that's in it?
Yes, the, that's a good one, Mark. I will make a motion to adjourn if I can have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Thanks, everybody.
And there was a link sent to you separately.
Okay.
You can follow that.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Good night, bye-bye.
Good night.